The out of sunshine meeting has adjourned. The CRA meeting of December 3rd will now come to order. CRA members, if the minutes of the September 17th, 2019 redevelopment agency meeting are acceptable, would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections or changes? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Minutes stand approved. The business relations manager, Mr. Greg Pauli, will present a status update on the city's redevelopment area. Mr. Pauli.
Good evening, everyone. Greg Pauli, Business Relations Manager. I have a quick presentation to show you, to bring you up to speed on where we stand right now with regards to ongoings in the CRA. Before I get into that, just the first couple of screens is a review of the budget information. I'm sorry. First screen is a review of the scheduled CRA meetings, which were required to publish annually. And you can see, we have tonight's meeting, we have February 18th, May 19th, and then August 18th of 2020. Those are our four mandatory required published meetings. And then the next couple of screens is a review of the agency's current budget. There you see the shared revenues from Hillsborough County at 19380, Tampa Port Authority at 4817, for a total shared revenue of 195, 197. The shared revenue plus the city's transfers, the city's transfers here are 217, 756, for a total agency revenue of 412, 953. This is a snapshot of the agency expenses. As in past years, the revenues is transferred through internal city accounting for an expenditure of 412, 953. The agency's budget is incorporated into the city's annual budget, which was approved previously this year. The year-end estimates and fiscal year 2021 projections will be available in mid-2020. And with that, I'll move on to the projects in our redevelopment area. This is just a big overview map to give everyone a point of reference. The orange outline is the city boundaries. The green outline in the lower-left segment of the orange is the 225-acre CRA district. Zooming in just a little bit on that, you can start to see the parcels that are color-coded and indicated with the different developers. I'll be zooming in on each of those in just a moment, so I know they're hard to read at this point, but you'll be able to see how much clearer as we move through the slides. The first one there in the foreground is Paragon. Paragon Property Group, that's right on the southeast corner of 56 and Bush. Behind them, you have the Richmond Group. That is the developer that's developing the apartment community. To the south of Paragon, you have an available parcel that fronts 56th Street. Moving further to the south, actually on the south side of Chicago there, you have the Enigma Project. And all the way in the background, you have the second of the two available parcels, and that is the Riverside Parcel. This shot is an artistic rendering of the Fountain Shops Plaza. Fountain Shops is the name that Paragon has labeled their plaza. This is a image looking back at the project from the middle of the intersection, showing an artistic rendering of the proposed corner feature. This feature combines the vertical elevation of a corner tower with dual cascading waterfalls that flow into two half-round fountain pools at opposite sides of the tower. This was, went through a series of redesigns and iterations by the developer. He ran into a little bit of difficulty with being able to incorporate tower and water feature right on the corner. If you remember from the very original concept, he had them separated. That idea did not pan out because, as you know, one of the anchor stores there, Chase Bank, did not allow anything to be connected to their building. Their building is a freestanding building. And the original concept had a tower that you may recall that connected those buildings. So moving the tower out with the water feature is what he came up with to combine the two. And I hope you do approve of it. I think it's going to be quite attractive. Yes, ma'am?
So the wall has been removed?
No, that's a, that's just an oversight in the rendering. There's no plans to remove the wall.
Okay.
We like the wall because we have our, you know, we have our logos on the corners there. That's simply an omission by the person who created the rendering. Moving down 56th Street, about a half a block or so, this is looking also at the same project at the A Street curb break. This is going to be more or less the center entrance to his project. You can kind of get an idea of the architecture design that he's moving, that he's going with. He's worked in some of the Mediterranean Revival into his roof lines, and he has his second-level elevated tower-like corner features. And here you see a cast iron filigree ironwork that bridges over the roadway.
Speeding motorcycle.
A speeding motorcycle. You may recall that the project consists of five freestanding buildings, a total of 22,000 square feet of retail, restaurant, banking, and professional office space. The final site plan was reviewed and approved, I'm sorry. The final site plan was delivered yesterday, I have my notes inverted there, was finally delivered yesterday. It has been previously reviewed and approved by our DRC. There was only one outstanding comment that he was asked to fix, and as soon as it was submitted yesterday afternoon, our staff was able to review it and see that that comment was corrected. And I did speak with Director Anisi, who's in the audience with me tonight. This final site plan will be coming before you for further discussion, and hopefully your approval in the first meeting of January.
Can I have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So what I'm looking at is the back door?
What you're looking at here is actually, if you were standing on 56th Street, looking directly into the project, meaning you're standing on, in the center of 56th Street.
So this is 56th.
Yeah, the motorcycle is 56th Street. Standing in 56th Street, looking due east.
And so the doors facing 56th Street are the back door of the properties?
The storefronts are developed so that the stores do pull all the way out to the roadside, but the common entrance is on the opposite side where the parking comes in. Several of the buildings, as you see, have walkways, breezeways, and entranceways that kind of join and make it all congruent through the area.
But there won't be anything in the back of those doors, like garbage cans or?
No, no.
Well, I mean, it's your back door, so.
I think Mr. Anisi has got a good eye on that.
I didn't think you would approve that.
He's got his whole team with us tonight, so.
Or air conditioners or things like that, that you would have?
Keep in mind the details of the site plan, you guys will see.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just a quick snapshot for the update. Mr. Anisi and his team have done a tremendous amount of work on this project, and they have a whole presentation to bring you in January. Now we'll take a look at the next project, which is the Richmond Group.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure to what detail that you're presenting this evening, but, I mean, I just come out and say it, that looks ugly. This is looking at 56th Street, looks like the back of a building. I would hope that you guys require a little bit more features to that building. I mean, as Ms. Downing, you stated here, she was actually referring to it as, is that the back of the building? That's what it looks like, the back of a building. And this is on the main drag, where I know you want to encourage interior circulation, I get all that, but you also want to make it attractive from the main thoroughfare that wants to encourage people to come in.
Sure.
The corner looks great, the fountains and that feature looks very nice. That feature on that little side street with the towers looks nice, but those.
Yes, these, again, these are just the renderings, these are not the final architecture drawings.
Okay.
Mr. Anisi can speak to all the architecture drawings?
Well noted, though.
Yes.
Yeah, I just, I mean, we really harped on bringing projects up to the property line, up to the road. It's for a reason, that's to show it off.
Sure.
And there's not, I mean, I'm not trying to downplay, because they're spending a lot of money on this, but a little bit of features can certainly change the whole dynamic of that look.
No, absolutely.
If it's glazed, even if it's not used, something, because that doesn't, based on the little bit I saw, doesn't look like it complements the potential, what's coming.
And speaking to that, there's also a lot of things in that DoD code, that downtown overlay, that is not reflected in these renderings. These renderings are very superficial, just to introduce you to the general concept of what you will see coming when the site plan's permitted or presented, and then, of course, after that, we have the architecture drawings.
So they're not actual elevations, then?
No.
As far as, okay, that's.
No, these are not, this is not a true elevation.
Okay.
Okay, this is just like, this is what the building's gonna be?
These are just renderings.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
We don't want, no, we don't ask.
Yep, very good. I think the next one here is the Richmond Group. You'll remember that the Richmond Group is building a apartment community. The project consists of 200 apartment homes divided between the two four-story buildings that you see in these two images. The top one there is a west elevation. The bottom one is the, I'm sorry, west elevation of the north building, the bottom one is a west elevation shot of the south building and the clubhouse you see off to the left Project has been approved. As you know, this site plan has already come through your review and approval, and Mr. Anisi verified for me that this project is now available for permitting. I've spoken to the project manager yesterday and today to gather as much information as I could bring to you tonight. He shared with me that they are currently seeking to close their construction loan, their construction financing. They would like to have that done within the first week or two of January, and after that, we will be coordinating a groundbreaking. So they are very close, probably the closest at this point. The next parcel down in the CRA remains available. That's the one just to the south of Paragon. That is the piece that is slightly less than two acres, sits right out on 56th Street. You see it there with the red and white box and the yellow markings. And this is what it looks like from the street. This project, or I'm sorry, this parcel is still available for purchase and is being marketed by our broker at Cushman and Wakefield. Moving further down 56th Street, now we've gone on the south side of Winn-Dixie, we have the Enigma Project. You may recall that this is a complete renovation of the old building that's on that property. That's the old auto service center, the discount retailer, and the postal annex structure. And that is going to be renovated into a boutique retail and restaurant space that is surrounded on all four sides by a covered walkway and has storefront, storefronts on all four sides. With regards to this project, as you know from previous updates, demolition started on this a few, several weeks back. Mr. Anisi shared with me yesterday that all the interior demo has been completed, and I recently corresponded with the developer. He plans to, he informed staff that the proposed site plan is near complete and will be submitted in the next few days. I'm hoping to have it by the end of this week. Next to that parcel, you'll see kind of in a very light red outline, is the adjoining parcel. Internally, we refer to this parcel as Enigma South. Enigma North is the one that is currently owned by, Enigma, the developer, and Enigma South is our internal reference for the parcel where the old restaurant building currently rests. The city's currently in negotiations, the city manager's currently in negotiations with Enigma to purchase that parcel as well. Those negotiations are ongoing as we speak. And that's the old building that you may recognize that currently occupies that space. The developer wishes to demolish that building and rebuild restaurant and retail space. And the last piece here in the southeast quadrant is the second of two available parcels, and that's the Riverside Properties. The Riverside Parcels, just over four acres of land located along South River Hills Drive, one-half block east of 56th Street. The parcel's back up to the Hillsborough River, and again, is currently available for purchase through our, through our broker at Cushman and Wakefield. Jumping out of the southeast quadrant, coming back up to Bush Boulevard, you're looking at the western side of the CRA now. You'll see here, kind of in the brown color, forefront to the right, that is the old bowling alley and skating center, being redeveloped at this time into Terrace, Terrace Storage Center. We'll talk more about that in just a second. In the immediate foreground, you have the proposed O'Reilly's Auto Parts, and in the background behind that, over at the old Kmart structure, you have a retail project that's being spearheaded by BDG Architects. This is a snapshot rendering of Terrace Storage. The top section there, or the top half of that image, indicates phase one of development, which is all of the existing building. I checked with, again, with Mr. Anisi yesterday, and this is about 80% complete. So that's moving along quite, quite well. If you look at the bottom image there, you'll see a building that extends further to the right, that would be west, and that would be phase two of development, which will commence after phase one is complete. And then, if you recall, this parcel, this project also has an out parcel, out closer to the roadway. The developer here is going to build some additional retail and restaurant space out front, so. Quick, quick look here at O'Reilly Auto Parts. Again, this is the current location of Lupton's Restaurant. I know we're all going to miss Lupton's Restaurant. This is the concept and waivers, waiver discussion that came to you at the last meeting, and that's just a real quick rough rendering. Again, these are not architectural finals in any way, these are just concept renderings for a quick snapshot. This, by the way, is going to be approximately 7,200 square feet of retail space for auto part sales. Moving across the street over at the old Kmart property, we have the retail project that's, I mentioned a moment ago, that's spearheaded by BD, BDG Architects. Their plan here is to redevelop the existing structure. It's a little over, I think it's really close to about 110,000 square feet existing retail space. They're going to subdivide that into four roughly equal retail spaces. I call that a medium format retailer. They, they use the term junior-size anchor store. So there's going to be some, again, this is still very early in negotiations, and I'm not at liberty to discuss their tenants or who they are seeking here, but you're going to see some, some general shopping opportunities, and also maybe some things that we haven't seen in the terrace before. Once, once we are able to secure, the developer's able to secure those contracts, then we'll be able to share much more of that. And finally, this is not a commercial project, this is a residential project, about a half a block behind Kmart. I know you've seen this on previous updates, this is a small duplex development. I report on it because it is new development within our CRA. You've heard me mention this, 9237 Overlook Drive, it's a, currently, you'll see the terracotta colored structure that exists on the, on the property runs east and west lengthwise, and it's along the north boundary. The proposal is to develop a second structure, very similar to what you see there, but to push it to the back of the property and have it run north and south. So the two buildings would essentially look almost like an inverted L. And with that, we'll jump back out, just for a point of reference, gives you an overview of the different projects that I've just spoken about, and shows you the relation to one another. Kind of gives everyone that hasn't had an opportunity to get out and visit any of those project sites, a good picture of where they are in relation to one another. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or, yes, sir.
What is the status of the negotiations with the Enigma South project?
If you remember, a few months ago, you guys authorized me to negotiate a contract with him. Every time we've had a meeting, the ball moves a little bit. We have retracted some of the initial conversations that we had with him about building a wall. If you remember correctly, he wanted to build a wall to the pond side of that property. It became a little problematic, and really with no assurances that he can provide to me that we would get it done. And certainly with some of the delays that we've had in the property that he currently owns, I don't have a comfy feeling that I've got that assurances that we're going to move forward. We have kind of retracted a little bit, and that's one of the, one of the conversations that I'm looking to have with you guys, one-on-one, so that I can kind of get an idea of what you'd like me to do with this piece of property. And there's some options, and we're still talking, and he's still interested, but he's been out of town a lot, quite honestly, so we haven't really been able to meet. But we fully intend to continue negotiations and getting something worked out. He's interested in the property. We're interested in selling the property. So I think it's just a matter of time. We'll get a deal cut with him.
Couple of questions. Do you have a timeline when somebody begins a project, how long they could take? Like on a construction job, like the bowling alley, a thing's flown by. This Enigma thing's been months, and it's moving like a turtle.
Yes.
So as you said, a few weeks, but it's been a few months, you know, so is there a timeline when somebody begins a job, so these things don't drag out for a year or two?
There are timelines within the agreement. He has definitely exceeded those timelines, and that is part of a conversation that I've had with him recently, with regards to confidence in being able to complete the project in a timely manner. So that certainly has worked right into some of the discussions that we've had, specifically Mr. Stevens has, has had with him.
Okay. Did we, I don't remember, to be honest with you, did we approve an elevation of the Enigma project?
No, sir.
Okay, that was it?
You've seen, you've seen concept only.
Okay. Who approved the elevation? Was it internal?
We haven't received the final architecture drawings at all.
Oh.
No.
Okay.
We've been waiting patiently for him to slip to the.
Okay. I thought once you start, like, type of project, they would have something, so we know, we know what we're going to get.
We have on a really old building.
We have clothes on the, on the property.
No, I know that.
I mean, he owns the property, and we're anxious to get some drawings from him, so we can get it in the system. The last, we heard last week, he was going to get it before the end of the month. Well, this is December 3rd, and we still don't have anything, but he keeps indicating to us that he's got plans coming to us, and plans coming to us, but we have not seen anything. But we're anxious to get some, and we'll move it through the system as quick as we can.
His, his latest communication with me was that he would be able to present a site plan this week. So I revisited that conversation yesterday to remind him that we are in need of that site plan. Our building department has been waiting and waiting and waiting, and simply hasn't had a plan to review.
I mean, I just normally remember when we approve projects in the past, that, you know, normally there'd be an elevation, a site plan, so we know how it's all flowing and working together. You know, I understand that we want to work with these folks and move things along, but we also don't want to get too far down the road, and all of a sudden, like, oh, we don't, it's not what we bargained for, it's something totally off the law. I mean, I get what staff's trying to do, is trying to accommodate him or any developer, so we can get the ball rolling. I get all that. But what I don't want to get into, and I know you guys don't either, is if we get up to a point where there's a problem, and it's taking too long like now, what do you do? You punish them, and then, you know, everybody's offended? Or his proposal of what he thinks is satisfactory is not what we envision as being satisfactory. I would just hope that some of those things happen before we let them pull the trigger and start working. Certainly, because then they're more motivated, they have skin in the game now, and they can't start working, they want to get it going. But he's moving along, yeah, I'll get it to you, I'll get it to you, but meantime, he's doing what he's got to do. So, I mean, it is what it is right now, but hopefully, in the future, some of these timelines have some guidelines and some teeth in them, where, you know, you, you got six months, then you got to get it done in six months, and it just helps keep things structured and moving along, with giving them, you know, reasonable flexibility, so that there is a comfort level, but it's not a free-for-all that they can take the time they want, because I, every time I go to Stefano's and have lunch, I look over, I'm like, what have they done? It's not much. They put a fence up, that's what I noticed, but, you know, they took a little bit of something off the wall, and you see the old Lindsay lumber colors popped up again, but I hadn't seen a lot. Maybe the inside's been gutted, I get that, but I've seen one or two cars outside, and not a whole heck of a lot of activity going on. Whereas you drive by the bowling alley, it's like a war zone.
Yes.
So that's, that's the only.
No, understood.
I get everybody wants it, but we probably have to have a little bit more arms around it, you know, so we have some more direct idea of what's, what's happening, when it's happening, and not in their hands. But anyways, you know, good job, it seems like things are moving along, and, you know, I would like the, in the future, in your endeavors, there's not a lot of energy in our redevelopment. I mean, we have redevelopment happening on a corner, the apartments going up, the average person in Temple Terrace doesn't know all that. You know, I don't know, I don't see it promoted much on, on the real estate websites, I'm on them every day. You know, Cushman and Wakefield's very good, they're one of the biggest and best in town. But, I mean, I think there's a lot of excitement and energy being transmitted there, but I don't see it being broadcasted. I don't know how to do that, that's not my expertise, but, you know, maybe coming, beginning of 2020, and maybe some kind of billboard out there showing the apartments in, just to get, and also attract a lot of attention, and increase the value of the parcels that are not purchased yet, certainly can be beneficial to us as well. But you create that, that atmosphere, that excitement, and developers get more interested, and they drive by and see, oh, coming soon, coming soon, this area's getting ready to blow up. And, I mean, I think if we injected some of that, drive up 56, around the wire grass and those areas, every time something's going to happen, big signs pop up. The energy's there, and we have it, we just, I think, need to.
I've had that exact conversation with both Paragon and Richmond, and in fact, I can't remember the exact day, it's been a couple weeks back, I was able to, Richmond's been very reserved, for obvious reasons. They, they're still working to finalize their financing. But as of, I want to say it was around about two and a half, three weeks ago, I was able to identify their PR person, that's going to be spearheading PR on their side, and I've got, I want to pair them up with our communications officer, Lori Hayes, and we've already started to make that synergy come together. So yes, those conversations are absolutely a priority. Some of the developers really have kind of pulled back a little bit from some of what you might call the big fanfare activities. And part of it, as you well know, they want to be able to have full tenancy, to be able to promote, and, you know, they don't want to announce something that's not filled yet. They want it to be filled, or at least a good portion of it to be filled, so that they can really promote that they have these large-name, or these national brands coming to their location. And that's kind of some of the reservation that we've gotten back from the commercial developers. Richmond just has a different, a different philosophy, and they're very close to the chest on everything until they're ready to completely pull the trigger and push out, push out the information.
I was just referring to something for our benefit, not the developer's benefit, saying, coming, you know, early 2020, 200-unit apartment, luxury apartments, 25,000 square foot of retail, and then that will draw a lot of attention and value to the parcels that we, we have still there to get those marketed. That's where I was aiming towards.
Understood. I understand now. Thank you.
Mr. Pauli, could you speak a bit to when Kmart is planning to begin their work in? Mr. Pauli, could you speak a bit to when Kmart is planning to begin their work? And the question is, what kind of barriers will they be putting up knowing that our Publix is experiencing a lot more traffic than is the norm as our larger North Publix is being renovated? How will that impact that parking lot as the Kmart is being renovated? And how soon will those renovations start? And just as, one, for our citizens who are viewing to, to be aware of what might be coming down the pike and then for us to just be informed so we can, as, as, as people ask us questions, we'll have the right information.
Sure. Well, I can certainly speak to the first part of that. I have to defer to either the city manager or Mr. Anisi to talk more about the requirements, the barriers, the fencing and so on. The first part of that is, I spoke to that developer yesterday also and they are still full speed ahead. They are, keep in mind, they are very, very early in the process. We've only had one pre-app meeting with them. We have no paperwork submitted at this point. That's why we don't have any real information that we can share. So they're very early in the process. Realistically, it's months of planning and project development and ultimately getting it before, we would of course bring things in here and let everyone in here see and approve and understand what's going and then coming in. As far as the requirements for the barrier of the property, I know that there's certain, certain requirements. I think Mr. Anisi can probably talk to that far better than I can.
Good evening. I'm Anisi Community Development Director. Yes, once we get to the phase of construction, we will isolate the building with the chanting fence. Of course, Publix shared the parking lot with the Kmart. We are not going to entirely eliminate the parking. We use it as an overflow, but partially. We will put the chain fence around the building for the construction, you know, actual affected area of the construction once we get to that stage. But we are pretty far from that point now. We are in the planning stage and developing, you know, construction document, construction plan, so.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Pauli? Thank you, Mr. Pauli.
Thank you.
Is there any other business to come before the CRA board? Okay, we will stand adjourned and go right into our council meeting. Good evening. The council meeting of December 3rd will come to order. Would ask that all in attendance please turn off or silence your electronic devices. Absolutely. Would ask all in attendance, please stand to honor God and country. Dear Lord, during this holy season, fill us with a spirit of kindness. May the message of love and mercy proclaimed across the centuries remind us to embrace and share all that is good and beautiful. Bless our city. During this holiday time, grant all the wisdom to forgive old hurts, the willingness to grow in love, and the glowing spirit that reflects your love. O Lord, may all who live, work in, or visit our city be filled with joy and inspired to share your generosity and kindness one to another. In your most holy name we pray, amen. Hand to heart as we pledge our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for its fairness, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Persons wishing to be heard on items that are not on the agenda, forms are available in the back of the room and may be turned into the clerk to your right. I would ask Tiffany Beltran to please approach the podium. Good evening Tiffany and thank you for being with us. On the morning of Wednesday, November 20th, at approximately 10:15 a.m., Dominic, Dom Torino, was in the fitness center at the family complex running on a treadmill. While on the treadmill, he suffered a medical emergency and collapsed. Another member alerted the fitness center attendant, Dedrick Ross, that Dom had collapsed and needed immediate attention. Dedrick ran to check on Dom and seeing his condition called 911. While Dedrick stayed with Dom, he sent another member to the front desk to get additional assistance. Raquel Ruiz, the customer service representative at the front desk, alerted the aquatics supervisor, Tiffany Beltran, who was in her office at the time. Tiffany immediately ran to where Dom was in the fitness center and began an initial assessment of Dom's condition. Finding that Tom, Dom was not breathing and had no pulse, she began to administer CPR. While this was occurring, additional staff arrived with the AED machine and the oxygen tank and both pieces of equipment were used in an attempt to resuscitate Dom. Tiffany never stopped in her efforts to save Dom's life. She continued to perform CPR on Dom and directed other staff as to how they could assist until the paramedics arrived and transported Dom to the hospital. Thanks to Tiffany's quick action and her knowledge and training in life-saving skills, Dom survived the ordeal and his condition is improving daily. Tiffany's experience, knowledge, and training were vital to Dom's survival. Her professionalism and experience make her a valuable asset to the city. Not only does she possess outstanding life-saving skills, but she is responsible for training the recreation staff in the use of the AED and oxygen tank. I'd like to recognize Tiffany Beltran for her quick response and outstanding life-saving skills in helping to save a life last Wednesday morning. We owe you a great deal of gratitude. Tiffany, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, yeah. I should have brought tissues. And I wrote it down because I get super emotional thinking about how far Dom has come over the last week and a half. But I just wanted to thank you all for the recognition and just like Dom, I'm very thankful to work for a city and a department and for directors that believe in teamwork and the, they recognize the importance of training and retraining and continuing education. I'm also thankful for all of the teammates that were involved in this incident, from Dedrick calling for additional support to Raquel calling EMS and for Chris for giving the ventilations and even Carl for administering the AED pads. And in our paramedics, they did amazing, an amazing job. And I'm just so thankful to have that team of support through any medical emergency that happens at the family recreation complex.
And Tiffany, I'm going to ask you to stand there and I believe Connie Torino is in the audience this evening. Connie, if you would come forward and I would ask Carl and I'd ask Chief to come forward as well. I would ask Principal Amber Cronin of PISO K-8 to come forward for a State of the School presentation. Good evening, Principal.
Hi, how are you?
Very good.
Thank you so much for having me. That's a very hard thing to follow, but what an, what an honor to be recognized.
It's okay. You teach young people every day.
We do. That's very true. We do. Thank you. I appreciate that. I am Amber Cronin, the very proud principal at PISO K-8 and we are located at the campus of USF. We are a Title I school that currently serve over 1,000 students. We have 1,003 enrolled. We serve students as young as pre-K. We have a pre-K program that services three and four-year-olds and then we have kindergarten to seventh grade. And then next year, we will be growing to a full-service K-8 middle school. Our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students are with us through the choice program. So for K-5, it's a neighborhood program and then for sixth, seventh, and eighth, that is a choice program. And we will be adding eighth grade next year, bringing our middle school campus to serve almost 200 students. So we have a very, a very large population of students that we serve. Some of the really exciting things right now are that we are working on student interest-based electives to serve for our middle schoolers. So we have things like public speaking, creative writing, and we have really been implementing a lot of the STEM, the science, technology, engineering, and arts and mathematics because we know that many of our students are very interested and very skilled in kind of doing things with their hands. And so those are just some of our electives that we're offering this year. We are getting ready to revise them for the spring semester that's going to be starting in January. And then also with the addition of eighth grade, we will be having some sports. So we're kind of exploring what some of our students are interested in. That way, we are definitely utilizing their interests and areas of expertise to kind of guide what we offer for next year. We are also transitioning to becoming a Marzano Academy, which is really about creating a high reliability schools framework. And what that means is that we are meeting the students where we are, we are using their strengths and interests to help them to demonstrate their understanding and their capacity of building their expertise towards the Florida standards. And that's in all subject areas. So right now, we have pilot groups. We have kindergarten, sixth and seventh grade right now. Next school year, we will add fourth and fifth grade and first grade. And then the following school year, it's a full three-year transition, we will be implementing it K-8. So that is very exciting. We've been getting a lot of, a lot of really great training and our students are really kind of buying into the program. So we have a lot of really exciting things happening. I would also like to say thank you to the Temple Terrace School Support Committee. We just received word that two of our grants were accepted. So we appreciate the support of the Temple Terrace community tremendously. You guys really make it a point to be involved in our schools. So for that, we think that the Temple Terrace community. The grants that we were awarded last year had such a positive impact on our student achievement and on our student engagement. There was one that was specifically for our third graders to help to increase their reading fluency. We had some flexible seating grants that were accepted. And then we also had some interactive learning tools that we were able to purchase and utilize with the grants. So that's kind of where we are at PISO. It's a great place to be. We invite you all to, to come out and visit us anytime. It is an absolutely amazing school.
Thank you, Principal.
You're welcome.
Board appointments, there is one vacancy on the municipal code enforcement board. The sole applicant is Brian Hubert. Would ask for a motion to approve the appointment of Brian Hubert for a term extending from December 3rd, 2019 until February 6th, 2021. Is there a motion?
There is a move to approve Brian Hubert to serve on the code board.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay sign. Thank you, motion carries and thank you, Mr. Hubert, for your willingness to serve our community. Council, if the meeting minutes of the November 19, 2019 city council meeting are acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Are there any changes or corrections? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay sign. Thank you. Minutes stand approved. Persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda, a three-minute time limit is imposed on all comments from the public. As speakers come to the podium, please state your name and your city of residence. During public comment on items that are not on the agenda, the city manager and directors who are in attendance do make note on these items that are related to city business and will follow up. First form this evening is from Nicole Sauer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members, city staff. I come bringing tidings of Christmas warm and fuzzies. I am here representing your Temple Terrace Junior Women's Club, not as Nicole, but as my alter ego elf peppermint tipsy cakes. I'm here with my other elf, Tipsy Berrybottom, and the president of the Juniors Club, Jess. I am happy and honored to be here to have this opportunity to let you know and other fellow Temple Terrassians that we have an upcoming fundraiser event. Your Temple Terrace Juniors will be hosting a Breakfast with Santa, that's her little thing right there, Breakfast with Santa on Saturday, December 14th, at our beautiful Woodmont Clubhouse. We will be serving a hot-plated breakfast, pancakes, egg, sausage, orange juice, the works, all catered by a Temple Terrace local business, MC, catering, and events. Families will also have personal visits with Santa and stories read to them by Mrs. Claus. And every family will have a photo with Mr. and Mrs. Claus done by Pam Ella Lee Photography. We all know her, she's fabulous. There will also be live music, holiday vendors, Pete and Repeat will be there and other reindeer games. We have two seedings, one at 8:30 and one at 10:30. Both have limited number of seats. Tickets are $15 per seat, so you can't just have your kid on your lap, you have to buy them a seat. They are, you can only purchase tickets through Eventbrite. You can get those tickets through two websites. Our TTJuniors.org, click on the link, and you can go to our Facebook page, get a pin for this, GFWC, Temple Terrace Junior Women's, with an A, Club. And you can follow the Eventbrite link through those two forums. And as of this morning, this is very exciting, we only have 19 seats left for the 10:30 and 36, 36 seats left for the 8:30 seating. So it seems that people enjoy the later morning seating before the early morning one. So, and keep in mind, we're going to stop selling tickets on next Tuesday in one week, oh my gosh, December 10th is the last day to buy tickets. So get them while you're quick. And, oh, I don't, since I thought, I like to spread Christmas cheer, I thought it would be fun if I let you all know what your alter ego elf names were. Madam Mel Gharado, your elf name is Dipsey, Dippy Berrybottom. Sir, Mr. Frank Chalura, you are Chestnut Whiffelsicle. Ms. Donahue, you are Tinker Sparklepot. Mr. Ross, Doodles Figgybum. Mr. Schistler, Bitsy Tipsy Cakes. Which to me is easier than Schistler. And Mr. Chambers, Coco Whiffelsicle. So if you all would like to join me at Breakfast with Santa, I will be sure to only address you by those names, so please also address me. And I hope you guys have a great night and see you there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no other forms. Is there anyone else that would like to address council on items that are not on the agenda this evening? If you would come forward, state your name and your city of residence.
Good evening. My name is Michael Lorenzo. I live here in Temple Terrace. I'm at 6613 White Way Drive, which is directly across the street from Lewis Elementary and the Rix Center. I don't know if this has been brought up before in the past, this is my first time coming to a city council meeting, but is there, are there plans or I'm possibly petitioning for plans for speed humps on White Way in front of the school?
There, the traffic along White Way has been brought up and it is something that I know City Manager Stevenson and our police department is, is working on.
Okay, so there are plans?
And, and they will follow up with you, sir, on, on where they are in the process. I believe, and Mr. Stevenson, I believe we've had some of the, I want to say the movable, but the temporary.
Yes, ma'am. We have been strategically looking at certain places in town. I don't know that White Way has not been identified as one of those areas, but we can certainly take a look at that.
Okay. The reason I bring it up is because I noticed that on that particular street, a lot of people like to use that as a bypass for Fowler and we tend to get a lot of speeders that go. people like to use that as a bypass for Fowler, and we tend to get a lot of speeders that go considerably over those speed humps. So, okay, that's all I wanted to bring up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address counsel this evening on items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move forward.
We have a hand in the back.
I think I might argue, is the issue of the traffic on 52nd Street within the proposed new...
That is not on this evening's agenda.
Could I speak about it?
If you come forward and state your name and your city of residence.
Hi, my name's Patricia Suzanne Alvarez, 2780 East Fowler Avenue, number 238, Tampa, Florida, 33612. But for the past 10 years, I have been a Temple Terrace resident, so I'm still always in the area. Okay, I actually have several concerns about it. I know in the past, you've all addressed the traffic issue, because I think that that is going to impact a lot. I have a concern about the people that live in the low-income apartments next to it, because in my experience, when, if a company owns something like that and they build an upscale place next to it, eventually, they kick those people out. So, I mean, just for the advocacy for the poor people, I think it might be hard for them to find a place to live. So I think that that should be considered. And also, there's something in regards to water. I have a friend who lives directly across the street, the Roberts, yeah, from the, and they have a well on their property. And for them, that's their only source of water, is that well. They've contacted Tampa about it, and Tampa's never going to connect the sewer or the water lines to their property because of where they are. And I think that there might be a well on the property that's being proposed to be built on. And if there is a well there, and they dig and contact that water somehow, or dig their own well, or decide to use it, I have a concern for my friend, how that might impact them. Because if it messes up their water, it's, I mean, their house is going to have no value. What are they going to do about water? Okay? So that's something very serious, and you all need to discuss that and find out if that well is going to be, if they're going to affect the water table there, how that might affect the Roberts. And I believe the house right next to the Roberts is also only on well, well water. And I don't think anybody's considered that at all. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel on items not on the agenda this evening? If you would step forward, state your name and your city of residence.
Hi, my name's Eric Schultz, and I live here in Temple Terrace. I'm with Mike, the guy who talked about the speed on White Way. I live right on the corner from there also. And the other traffic concern that I have is the stop sign right in front of your house, Frank, where the River Hills and White Way meet. It's an optional stop sign. Most people just go right through it. If I'm out there walking my dog and I give him evil eye, they'll slow down a little, but, and I don't want to create more traffic problems. I know that when I tell my wife I'm going to come here tonight and talk about speed bumps, she's like, "Oh, my God, we'll be driving over speed bumps too, like everybody else." But it's really bad. And my son's dog got killed last year on White Way, so it's kind of near and dear to my heart. And there's kids on Lewis, and there's kids at the RIC Center. And, you know, we don't need people skipping Fowler and going 45, 50 miles an hour. And that's how fast they go, because we have the little thing that tells you how fast people are going. Doesn't work real well anymore, by the way. You know, the one that's solar? It tells them how fast they're going after they pass. But as I'm standing there, I see it. So anyway, and then lastly, about traffic, our circle on Montrose and Cliff right there is really close to Lewis Elementary. And I get it that the drop-off at Lewis is time-consuming, and a lot of folks want to skip that, because they want to use our little stretch of land, which is fine. But I don't know if I need to go talk to Lewis about it, but a lot of them come flying through there, too, in the mornings. And I know they're running late. We all have to drop our kids off, and we're running late sometimes. But maybe if we had some kind of a sign there, too, to say, you know, "Hey, it's okay if you're going to drop your kids off, because you don't want to get caught up in that loop in front of Lewis, but please, you know, be respectful," or, I don't know. You can't put all that on a sign, of course, but something would be nice. Or a speed bump in there, just to kind of make them slow down a little. And Mike and I, actually, he's already talking to the police, he's already got a plan going, I'm sure. We don't want just a speed bump. We like those speed humps. You know, the ones where you have to kind of go up and go over and come down again?
Platform.
Because there's some kids in our neighborhood now that have these really fast, ramped-up, you know, HEMs or whatever they call them, very loud and fast, and I'd like for them to really slow down, you know, and go over that nice and easily. So that's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. What a great night to have MPO in the audience. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel on items that are not on this evening's agenda?
Good evening. Pat Roberts, 11406 North 52nd Street. As my friend brought up about the well, that both of the houses that are on that side of the street, we are only on well and septic, okay? And I was told 18 years ago that there will never be water lines run at that area. What they have for Ryans, I guess, runs down Fowler, and then there is TECO for the high-tension lines, and then there's those two houses. We have no other access to water except for our well. That is it. So my concern is, is that they are going to put up this apartment building that is in the empty lot. Who knows what, you know, to me, when you start talking about renovations on the building that is next door, to me, it's code for gentrification. And I don't know what all they're planning for doing. That, maybe a demolition could be another type of, the same type of building. It could be a bigger building. It could be a pool, whatever. It's all going to require more water. And our well is 40 feet off of 52nd Street. That's it. And we can't move that well. And so if something happens with this, I don't know if we're even going to be able to drill somewhere else on the property. The one that's at 11406, they are behind the house, and they're able to pump. And they're much deeper than what we are. We're not very deep. We're at 70 feet, and our jet sits at 61. If we don't have water, the property is absolutely worthless. So that is something else that I would like you all to consider. You know, the amount, again, I can't stop about this thing with the traffic. The amount of apartments, if there are 24 apartments at an absolute minimum, you're looking at two cars per apartment, and plus all the visitors that they're going to have. And then, again, if there is gentrification, and they knock those apartments down, which I don't see why they wouldn't, then we're going to be dealing with maybe even double that amount of traffic on that road. And I know that it was mentioned about Armature Works and about Seminal Heights and all that. This isn't that area, okay? We are not that big, okay? It's a very small, short street that is controlled by Tampa and Temple Terrace. And again, I would like us to, you know, revisit some of these items before there's a vote on this, because it's going to destroy us. I mean, that's all there is to it. We've got enough problems over there. We've got coyotes. We've got homeless over Ryans. We've got to deal with TECO and try to get them to cut that lawn, you know? I mean, it's crazy. We have rats in our yard. We have everything. And it's going to upset a lot of things that are going on when we start construction on those two, on that lot, and possibly, if there's something that happens, with the apartments that could be torn down. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Is there anyone else that would like to address counsel this evening on items not on the agenda?
Good evening, Council Madam Mayor, Tom Roberts, 11406 North 52nd Street. And I hope nobody's offended by the game on Saturday night with me wearing orange and blue. But it was brought up in the last meeting about using traffic studies and laypersonnel tests to find that there were court cases that came out against that. I was a deputy with Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office for 36 years, and during that time, I was a traffic radar operator, and later became certified as a radar instructor during the Institute for Police Traffic Management at North Florida. One of the things we teach, you have a target vehicle, is to do a tracking history on that vehicle, and you try to visually estimate the speed of that vehicle until you get a good radar lock on it. And so I would like to think that I am not a layperson doing visual estimates of traffic speeding on that street, but that's my main concern, is the increase in traffic the new apartments will bring, and the amount of speeding that will take place on it. Thank you, folks. I appreciate it. Take care.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Is there anyone else that would like to address counsel on items that are not on this evening's agenda?
If I might, I need to remind counsel of the last few speakers that have gotten up and talked about the item that involves a rezoning that will be coming before you on your agenda and a comprehensive plan amendment. These are quasi-judicial matters. They need to come back and speak at the time that this is on the agenda, and I would ask that you generally disregard what has been said this evening, because this is going to cause an issue, because the applicant is not here to cross-examine them and is not here to rebut these matters. So these items should have been, should very well come before you when this is on the agenda, but not tonight.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the public or address counsel? Very good. Moving forward, consent agenda. City Manager Stevenson will explain items on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've got just two quick consent agenda items. The first is a resolution authorizing the city manager to ask you to contract with Excel Painting Services in the amount of $42,874.77 to paint the exterior of City Hall. These were funds, this fund is approved in this current year's budget. Funds will be provided out of account 160-1719-519.62-41. The second item on consent is a resolution recognizing the appointment of Kim Linebaugh to the city's Auditor Selection Committee. I had some conversation with Kim after he reached out to me and offered up his services, and it is my recommendation that we appoint him to that committee. That's all that's on consent.
Are there any members of the public wishing to address counsel on items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, if the consent agenda is acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
To approve.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you, motion carries. The first public hearing and first reading of an ordinance to adopt 2019 Capital Improvement Schedule of Projects is now open. Diego Guerra, Hillsborough County Planning Commission, will present.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Diego Guerra, Planning Commission staff. This is the Planning Commission's review of the annual update to the Capital Improvement Section Schedule of Projects. This is a routine update, annual update, that is required under Chapter 163 of Florida statutes. Sorry, the clicker's slow.
We do that just to mess with people.
Yeah.
It seems like every meeting.
Every meeting, yeah. We do that just to rattle our speakers.
My apologies. The review was conducted in accordance with Chapter 163 of Florida statutes that requires the Schedule of Projects be updated on an annual basis. The Schedule of Projects is a grouping of projects that is selected from the Capital Improvement Program that address level of service. The update would replace the existing Schedule of Projects in the comprehensive plan with the Schedule in your packets. This update is accomplished by ordinance per Chapter 163. Additionally, plans of other agencies are adopted by reference into the schedule through existing policy in the Capital Improvement Section. Temple Terrace and Planning Commission staff worked together to identify projects in the Capital Improvements Program that affected the adopted level of service. City staff identified whether those projects eliminated deficiency, maintained level of service, or served for future growth. City staff also requested the list of 10-year transportation projects be incorporated as part of the Schedule of Projects for those portions that were city projects within the first five years and specifically affected level of service. Those projects were included in the report analysis and the analysis in this presentation. Depicted on the slide is a summary of Schedule of Projects by program area. As you can see, there are six program areas, which consist of a total of 87 projects that make up the Schedule of Projects. The FY '20 through FY '24 funding amount is approximately $25.8 million. In terms of priorities, the bulk of the project funding, which is approximately 71% for repairs and renovation to maintain level of service, the remainder of the funding is intended for future growth or to eliminate deficiencies. Planning Commission staff also examined the schedule with respect to the goals, objectives, and policies of the Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan. A few of these policies are identified on the slide. However, a full list is available in your packets. First, the schedule is consistent with the direction for level of service priorities, which state that they should be for repair, replacement of facilities, to eliminate deficiencies or plan for future growth. Secondly, the schedule is consistent with the funding criteria identified in the comprehensive plan, both in terms of revenue, revenue fund, and timing. Additionally, the Schedule of Projects further serves, furthers several of the infrastructural, infrastructure sub-elements, including providing quality infrastructure and services to residents and enhancing transportation options. At its 18 November 2019 regular meeting, the Planning Commission found the proposed Schedule of Projects consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Temple Terrace Comprehensive Plan. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes my presentation. Myself and the city staff are available for questions.
Any priori questions, Mr. Guerra? Would ask if there are any members of the public that would like to address counsel on this matter. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Councilmember questions? Councilman Ross.
I'm not sure if this is a question for you or the city attorney or a combination thereof, but just a little enlightenment for me. When we agree to this Schedule of Projects, I mean, they all look fine, but we haven't had much council discussion about some of them that are in the future. When we discussed the budget, you know, if it's two or three years out, we don't spend a lot of time talking about it. We just talk about the ones that are impacting our budget this year. And so when we approve this in concept, I mean, most of them are pretty vanilla, just replacing things on schedules and those kinds of things. But some of them, we would want to have discussion on. We haven't had that, because it's not coming up for four years. So I guess what I'm trying to ask is, how locked in do we get by approving the schedule when the time comes to approve that particular capital project or not? Because I wouldn't want to, I may not even be on the council, but I don't want to get into, not that I'm contemplating just trashing this, I'm just saying, I don't want to reach a point where three years from now, we say, "Well, we voted on it three times now. This has been on the schedule for three years or five years. Why are you now just bringing these concerns up now?" I mean, but there's things on here that we haven't even talked about, because it's a couple of years out. So what level of locked in are we?
Sir, the city's finance director is here, available for questions. Maybe she's able to further clarify how the city comes up with the Capital Improvements Program. Because the Schedule of Projects is made up of projects from the Capital Improvement Program, which was adopted by the city.
Well, right. I know how we got these projects on the spreadsheet.
Yes, sir.
But I also know that we don't spend a lot of time debating projects that are three years out. We don't even talk about it, because the city manager pulls it and says, "Okay, well, we pulled it from this year's budget request. We put it in next year or the year after." But, so, I mean, I get, I know how the city staff develops that, and we kind of look at it and go, "Yeah, it's okay. We'll worry about it in three years." But by now approving these, you see what I'm saying? Am I making sense or am I talking circles here? I mean, are we locking ourselves in to projects that we haven't even discussed or not?
No, you're not. If I may try to answer your question.
Okay.
You've got a current year that is funded. The rest of it is a statutory requirement that we're supposed to create a five-year plan. None of it is funded yet. So as far as locking in to expenditures on a project that shows up on the Capitol for 22, 23... for twenty-two, twenty-three, that's cer, it's all subject to change. The only thing that you're, you're, you really should be concerned about is the capital projects that you're funding in this current budget, okay? The rest of it is projects that we're looking at on the horizon that are not funded, and they don't get funded until we bring it back to you guys. But we're required to put a, a five-year plan together. That doesn't mean that we're locked in to doing that particular project at twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Other questions, counsel? If the clerk would please read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, providing for the annual modification and update to Capital Improvement Section of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan for the City of Temple Terrace pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes by modifying and updating the five-year capital improvement schedule of projects for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty through fiscal year two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four and incorporating the ten-year long-term improvements for the multimodal transportation district for the twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-nine into the schedule of projects adopted by reference per the Comprehensive Plan cap policy one point five point thirteen, Hillsborough County Metropolitan Planning Organizations, MPO, Transportation Improvement Program, TIP, Hillsborough Area Regional Transit's HEARTS Transit Development Plan, TDP, and Hillsborough County Public Schools Facilities Work Program, providing severability and effective date and repelling all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith.
If the ordinance is acceptable, would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance on first reading? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the first reading of an ordinance to adopt 2019 Capital Improvement Schedule of Projects.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion, counsel? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. The ordinance will appear for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, December seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. Thank you. Item eight A, a resolution approving the final budget adjustment for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Finance Director Lynn Boswell will explain.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I bring before you a resolution to do one last budget adjustment to the sanitation fund. That should be the last of it, that is the last of it for the fiscal year eighteen, nineteen. It's a requirement that I bring this before you in a certain amount of time, and this is the time I have presented this to you. As shown in the outline, the major contributors to this overage has to do with the increase in dumping fees, particularly for the commercial and for the roll-offs. Conversely, though, in the revenue, we also received more than enough revenue to offset those expenses, so this is actually a direct, it's a direct contribution of, we've had more to dump, but we've had the revenue to support that. So, I am here to request just a one hundred thousand dollar increase in the appropriation for the sanitation fund.
Thank you. Are there members of the public wishing to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, counsel questions? Seeing none, if acceptable, would entertain a motion approving the final budget adjustment for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen for the sanitation fund.
Move to approve the budget adjustment.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Next, a resolution approving a five-year agreement with Nova Time Technology for Timekeeping Software. Finance Director Lynn Boswell will explain.
Good evening, Madam Ma, Mayor, council members. This evening, I'd bring before you an electric timekeeping that the directors are very, very thrilled about. Thankfully, you had already approved this in the budget when we had discussed. It is for this year, I, I know you see that big eighty-one thousand, but that's over a five-year period. For this year, it is thirty-six thousand two hundred and forty.
Thank you. Once again, are there members of the public wishing to address counsel on this item? Seeing none, counsel questions? If acceptable, would entertain a motion authorizing the city manager to execute a five-year agreement with Nova Time Technology for Timekeeping Software.
Move to approve the resolution.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye. Opposed, nay sign. Thank you. Motion carries. Counsel business. Is there any carryover business from our last meeting, counsel?
I do. I have some. At the last meeting, principal and lead teacher from Greco Middle School came, and then the very, and they gave us a nice presentation, but the very next night, we had a school advisory council meeting where they gave me some statistics that, I asked them, why don't you share those with counsel? Because they're, they're really impressive. And so, I would like to share those with you. They said they misunderstood. They thought they were supposed to talk about a grant they had won and some things they were using. So, so I just want to share some things with you because I want you to reckon, I want to be, to recognize the school and that they have two hundred and fifty more students since this year than they did last year. So, the school has seen quite a growth. So far, attendance, now, these are calculations, benchmarks, attendance of those students who have ninety percent attendance and above has risen from eighty percent to eighty-five percent. That's pretty impressive. Behavior with those ex, even with those extras, and even with everybody being there, this is percentage of students with zero suspensions has gone from eighty-eight percent to ninety-two percent. So, ninety-two percent of all students at Greco have zero suspensions. So, that's, that's great improvement. And then one last, and of course, performance, the seventh graders have gone from a seventy-nine percent to ninety-six percent. Those are passing all core math and ELA courses. That's a huge jump, and I, that's the one that really caught my attention. And of the eighth graders, they've gone from an eighty-eight percent to a ninety-one percent passing all core classes. So, I just couldn't let that go by without sharing that with everybody because this is our middle school, and, and I think those are the types of statistics that are really impressive, and we wanted to hear. So, thank you for allowing me to share that.
Thank you. Is there any other carryover business for counsel? We will go to new business, and the first item under new business is a presentation from MPO on the 2045 Long Range Transportation Plan. Beth Alden, Executive Director of the Hillsborough Metropolitan Planning Organization, will present.
Good evening, and thank you so much for having us this evening. We are here just to give you a overview of the Long Range Transportation Plan. This follows up on our, our conversation earlier in the year where we were looking at some survey results of what people's preferences are for their future growth and development and major priorities for transportation investment. And so, I, I most humbly apologize to you that we held a public hearing to adopt the Long Range Transportation Plan on the same night that you had a city council meeting. And so, your citizens had to choose between participating in that public hearing and coming to your city council meeting. So, we wanted to reach out and make sure that you had the opportunity to talk with us directly, and if there are any further questions from your citizens about this, we'd be more than happy to address that. I'm here with Sarah McKinley, who's our principal planner, who is primarily responsible for putting the cost feasible plan together, and Sarah will be giving you an overview of the plan.
Thank you. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you again, Sarah McKinley, MPO staff. Tonight, I'm, like Beth said, just going to go through the development of our Long Range Transportation Plan that is newly adopted. So, as far as creating the plan, we started two years ago with our initial public outreach and information to help us develop our sort of growth scenario that will be underlying within the plan. So, it's sort of looking at where is population and employment going to grow. From there, we worked on updating our, finalizing those projections as well as identifying needs to be included in the plan and also developing a revenue forecast. We then did a second public outreach where we focused on our major projects. From there, we were able to complete our needs assessment and then develop the cost feasible plan that was adopted November fifth. We know that there are still a lot of questions to be answered after the adoption of this plan, so we did make sure that we built in flexibility for that with the surtax. There are many questions that both Hillsborough County and HEART are working on discussing, including what other major roads should the county include, as well as what does fixed guideway mean to the HEART board and where should that go? We've also been working closely with FDOT on what major projects, especially with their strategic intermodal system, as well as looking at the downtown interchange and the managed lane system that is proposed on the interstates. We've been working with the Expressway Authority. They have several studies going on, so what are going to be the outcomes of that, as well as looking at what are possible enhancements or other designs for I-275 north of downtown. So, as far as putting the cost feasible plan together, there's really the three major components. It's that revenue or funding forecast that we worked on that looks at all federal, state, and local funds that are projected between now and 2045. And then, within those forecasts, there are eligibility requirements for each of the funding sources. So, making sure that we know those and apply those to certain projects, and then we allocate those funds based on the different projects. So, as far as looking at what our revenue forecast with and without the surtax, without the surtax, fifty-five percent of that fund would be going to the strategic intermodal system and the state highway system, so mainly the interstates and state roadways. With the surtax, we were able to increase our transit funds by fifty-five and a half percent, as well as enhancements to local roads by eighty-four percent. So, as far as what we heard in our public outreach, this is sort of the feedback from that second round. We had, or the first round, sorry. We had about fifty-two hundred participants total, and a lot of data points, a majority of the responses, as you can see, eighty-nine percent were county residents, ninety percent worked within Hillsborough County as well. So, as far as looking at the proposed allocations for those funding sources, back when we did the 2040 plan, we moved towards what's known as performance-based planning, where we had four program categories that were developed, and then a fifth one that looked at major investments. Those first four categories were, again, program-based, so looking at how do we preserve our system, maintain our roadways and bridges, resurfacing, also our safety program, which is now our Vision Zero program. We have our Smart Cities program, and then our Real Choices When Not Driving. And this is showing sort of what that allocation would be with the thirty-two point two billion that is forecasted between now and 2045. So, as far as those program categories that I mentioned, what do we get with those? That first one, preserving the, or state of good repair and resiliency now, as it's called, that is our pavement, bridges, as well as maintaining our current bus system and protecting our coastal environments. Our safety program, which again is now our Vision Zero, this is looking at complete streets, sidewalks, lighting, all those sort of bigger bang for your buck kind of safety projects. We then have our Smart Cities. This is looking at taking advantage of technology on our roadways, so looking at better intersections, signals, traffic management, those kinds of things within that program. Our Real Choices When Not Driving, this looks at expanding the current bus service, so not just maintaining the level that we have, but expanding from that, as well as looking at our trail system and side path. So, increasing accessibility to jobs through those programs. And then we have our major projects. This is looking at rapid transit and its own dedicated ride of ways. Like I said, what does that definition of fixed guideway mean to HEART, as well as major interchange upgrades, and also new through lanes on the interstate and other So, this is sort of an overview of that major investment category that I mentioned. We did go out to the public, and sort of what we heard most out of the major projects that were, I guess, given to them sort of a platter of about fifteen different projects throughout the county, looking at rail and state ride rail, as well as the extension of the current streetcar, were the top priorities. And so, as I mentioned in the beginning of my presentation, that flexibility that we've built in, this is sort of the placeholder for that. So, this is looking at the reuse of the CSX tracks, as well as the downtown to USF and downtown to Westshore being the two routes with the highest rider potential, and then also other bus rapid transit that could be included in this as well. Sorry, there's animations apparently. And then also, we also included the water ferry as part of this analysis, too. As far as our major investments for roadways, we looked at, again, the strategic intermodal system. This is FDOT's plan that is updated quite often, looking at what major roadways to invest in. And I-75 and I-4 managed lanes were on there still, and also looking at that interchange of I-75 and I-4 for additional projects. We also included, there is a Sly Avenue extension that has been included in that area as part of our cost feasible plan as well. Some projects not around, or around Temple Terrace, but also included in this, included US-41 in South County, there's looking at separating the CSX tracks, I-275 downtown interchange, looking at the quick fix that was approved for that, as well as safety enhancements. There is the Gandy Bridge replacement that was included, and then also additional projects in South County on US-301 and such. When we asked about these major projects, this is when we asked about I-4, I-75 interchange, as well as the Sly Avenue extension, and as you can see there, the yellow is the mostly positive responses in that. So, these projects around here, just east of Temple Terrace, did have support widely throughout the county, as seen through this graphic. As far as the downtown interchange, this is, there were four options that we asked within the public outreach, and that looked at a no-build, that also looked at the safety quick fix, as well as express lanes, and then the full rebuild. As you can see, the no-build overall had the most least-like responses, and then we get to the safety and traffic quick fix. That was the one that had, especially with the residents closest to it and north of there, had the most favorable responses overall. And then, the express lanes and the full rebuild were the ones that had probably the least favorable, and that is why through our plan adoption, we decided to include the safety and traffic quick fix for the downtown interchange. As far as our important roadways within the next five years, or I guess the first five years of our plan, so this is what is also included in our Transportation Improvement Program, which is updated every year in a public hearing in June, and we have the Howard Franklin Bridge rebuilt in there. We've also, through the highlights that we just received from DOT, have the Westshore interchange included in there. We have I-4 interchanges improvements all along to Polk County, as well as the I-75 Big Ben improvement in South County, I-275 adding two lanes from downtown north, as well as other local projects that are being identified by the county in the capital improvement If you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Councilman Schisler.
How many residents in Hillsborough County?
Right now, there's about one point four million. We're looking at about two million by 2045.
So, we have five thousand two hundred and nineteen participants. I believe this is one of the things we did at the library back in the spring, I guess it was?
Yes.
Okay. I think we had eight people there from the Temple Terrace area, if I remember correctly. Anyway, do you, a curious question I have, and I've, I've expressed this in other venues also, dealing with HEART. How long have we been doing this type of a projection? Is this the first one, or is this a rolling?
Every five years, we update the, are you talking about the population and employment projections or the plan?
No, just what we're do, what, what you presented tonight. How often have we done that?
This plan is updated every five years.
Every five years?
Yes.
So, when was the last, how many, how many years have we done, how many times have we done this?
I believe we started with a 2010 plan, and that was about thirty, thirty-five years ago, I believe.
Okay. So, we've been doing, we've done this seven or eight times now, this iteration?
Yes.
What is our track record of how, of what we projected, what's been accomplished through the time, through the years? Specific, a couple specific ideas?
Sure. I'm going to field that because I've, I've been at the MPO for going on twenty years now, but that's still not as long as the MPO has been preparing Long Range Transportation
that's still not as long as the MPO has been preparing Long Range Transportation Plans. So a couple of things that we've noticed over time is that although the growth rates that we have assumed have been pretty high, especially compared with the rest of the country, they still have not actually kept pace with the actual rate of growth of our population. Our vehicle miles of travel, you know, vehicle miles out on the roadways also have continued to increase. There was a dip during the recession, but they've rebounded, so you're probably aware of that just from being out there driving on the roadways. In terms of what projects have gotten funded, so you know, another thing that we're looking at here is how much funding is available and hoping to build things over time. So the projects that are in, that have been in previous Long Range Transportation Plans that are part of the interstate highway system have been gradually getting built over time. The projects for rapid transit in our county have been in the Long Range Transportation Plan and have languished, iteration after iteration after iteration. And so we're optimistic, we're hopeful that we'll be able to turn that around with the new transportation sales SRTAX, because that can leverage federal and state grant dollars. So if we actually want to invest in a rapid transit system, you get a three-to-one match on your local dollars for building something.
It's a big assumption. It's a big hope.
It is a big hope.
So, I don't know, I just, I've seen the spaghetti model of all the roads that we want to build, but I don't know how many of these have actually been accomplished over the duration of this project, if you go every five years, and...
Think about what I-4 looked like 20 years ago, or think about I-275 west of downtown Tampa. It's much, much wider than it used to be. All of the lanes were built on the outside of the previous lanes and...
That's my point. Were these initially projects that were thought of through this, through this iteration or this process? Okay, okay.
Councilman Ross.
I have a kind of a general question. I'm not sure if you can get a good succinct answer to this, but I mean, I've been involved in these bottom-up, you know, community-focused groups, whatever you want, for years, for decades, because in my life at the sheriff's office, I was involved in that stuff, too. So I, my question is, how do you balance community input versus somebody who's got training and expertise in traffic engineering? So I go often think of it, I mean, if I got cancer, God forbid, I would certainly consult with other people who had had the same kind of cancer that I had to see what their experience of treatment had been, what they advise, but I'm going to put more weight on the surgeon's advice and the oncologist than I am on, you know, just, well, I live here and I would really like to see this, or I'd... So how do you balance as a planner? Okay, 3,000 people tell you something, but we have 1.4 million people that, you know, you didn't talk to most of them. And usually, the people that show up at the workshops show up because they have a passion one way or the other. They don't, you don't get a lot of disinterested people. You get the people who have a passion, they hate this project, or they love this project, they want to see a train, they want to see, whatever they want to see, they're passionate. So you're not really getting, you know, I wouldn't say the man in the street, you're getting kind of somebody who's got, already got kind of some preconceptions. So I'm not saying we shouldn't, or you shouldn't consider what the public wants, I'm just asking you, how do you balance what the, the surveys are interesting, but I want to know what the engineers say, too. I don't want, just because 3,000 people say, I want to see an off-ramp here, I want an engineer to say there's no justification for an off-ramp. So how do you balance those things?
Sure, that's a, that's a great question. And there is, there's a lot of technical analysis that goes into the Long Range Plan in addition to the public outreach. So all of these projects, they come out of a technical modeling process, they generally appear in the list of potential projects after discussing them with implementing agency and making sure that the implementing agency thinks that's a project that they would conceivably be ready to move forward with. So it is, it's definitely a balancing act. The, one thing about the public outreach is that, I mean, you're exactly right. Our most widely attended public hearing, we had 400 people. That is a fraction of the level of response that we got on the survey that we did over the summer. There's more than 10 times that level of response. A statistically significant sample in Hillsborough County, it's about 800 residents. You know, again, we've got five times that in the survey that we did over the summer. We checked to make sure that we had a decent demographic mix on our survey responses. We checked for geographic mix, and we looked at how did the responses to that survey vary area by area around the county? So we feel like we have a good, you know, at least some idea of what the sentiment is, particularly in, among the communities that are next to projects that are proposed, so that we can at least flag issues that may need to be resolved in the future.
Are there any other questions? I'd like to thank you both for presenting tonight, and thank you, Ms. Alden. As the MPO approved our meeting schedule for the upcoming year, there are no, there are currently no meetings that conflict with our council schedule, so I thank you for that going forward.
Let us know if we need to make adjustments.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Additional new business, counsel, the Leah family partnership litigation settlement, is there a motion that counsel would like to bring forward?
I would move that pursuant to our shade meeting prior to this meeting, that we accept the proposed settlement agreement in the aforementioned case.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion, counsel? All in favor, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you, motion carries. Is there any other new business to come before counsel? Seeing none, we will go to city manager's report. Mr. Stevenson has a proposal for counsel consideration with regards to Christmas Eve. Mr. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Really, just, I've got a request from counsel and just a bunch of notices that I'd like to give, but the request is that this year, Christmas falls on Wednesday, and my suggestion is to counsel that they consider giving Tuesday off, which is Christmas Eve, to city employees, general employees, obviously. Police and fire would make whatever adjustments they need to make during the course of that week. Sanitation, we've talked with Mr. LeBlanc, who will make provisions to continue with our solid waste pickup, but my suggestion would be is to, for counsel to consider giving general employees Christmas Eve off.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Counsel, do you have any questions with regards to this proposal?
No.
If acceptable, would entertain a motion authorizing the city manager to offer Christmas Eve 2019 as a paid administrative day for general employees. Is there a motion?
Move to give the city employees off on Christmas Eve?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay sign. Thank you, motion carries. Mr. Stevenson.
Much appreciated. I'm sure that will resonate real well with our general employees. Thank you very much. A bunch of announcements to make, just kind of upcoming stuff here. December 6th, which is Friday, there is a Angela Hope ceremony at Riverside Park, something that they do on an annual basis that certainly I think is one of those events that is, something that is worth attending, just to let you know that that is coming up. December 5th, there is a MAD event, Mothers Against Drunk Driving at Mission Hill, that is on December 5th, that starts at 7:00 PM, chief, 7:00 PM. This Saturday, the 7th, we have our Winter Wonderland Event from 5:00 to 8:30, the tree lighting at 6:00 PM. Is that right? 6:00 PM. We have a ribbon cutting December 6th, which is again on Friday. They kind of coincide with our holiday luncheon, but certainly well worth rushing around. Focus Academy is doing a ribbon cutting at the rec center, which is always, always great to see those kids and what they're doing over there. It's heartwarming. Remind counsel, we have our holiday luncheon on Friday as well. That starts at 11:30. So we'll be rushing between, we're trying not to speed on Lightfoot getting there, but...
Is that Lightfoot?
Yeah.
So the first one is...
It's at Lightfoot, yes, sir. And then just coming up here in the, in the near future, on December 7th, we had scheduled a workshop to have a joint meeting with the code enforcement board to discuss the, an approach to dealing with some of these liens that are filed that I think would be worth a conversation to have, so that we can get everybody on the same page. That's coming up in the future.
You don't have a date?
January 7th.
Oh, January.
Yeah, it's tentatively scheduled on the work, on the tentative agenda, certainly subject to change if we have some conflicts with time or whatever, but just to kind of put that on the horizon, a few meetings from now, a couple meetings from now. But really with that, Madam Mayor, that's all I have. We've got a lot going on.
Thank you, city manager. Stevenson, is there any further business to come before counsel?
I don't have anything.
Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.